Good morning, Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington and Commissioner Willie's excuse for today.
Thank you, Clerk Mas, and welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 Board Work Session. We did have some work session agenda updates on Friday or yesterday. Yep, it was yesterday on Monday. So, under item three, we have a letter to look at and item seven has some revised materials. So, without further ado, there are four of us here today. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioner Nafisifi and Commissioner Jason Snyder. We have a formal business meeting at 10 o'clock this morning. Do any Commissioners have any questions or items that you wish to move off the consent agenda?
No.
I know. Great. Then we can move on to our next agenda item, which is appointment to the Property Values Appeals Board. This is an annual board that meets for a very short time, but they have a really important role to play for community members, property owners that want to appeal their property tax assessments. So, take it away, staff.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Records and Elections. And with me today is Fred Ramstead, Division Manager for Records and Cartography. And as you were saying, today, our purpose is to present the candidates for the Property Values Appeals Board, P-VAB for short. To start with, I'd like to remind you of the new legislation that's from the 2023 session. And that was House Bill 2031, which renamed or property tax appeals, the Property Values Appeals Board, P-VAB. Secondly, House Bill 2237 increased the board member terms from one year to two years. Last year, we had a very successful year. I'm very appreciative of the three returning members. And we have two additional members this year for a total of five members. The purpose of the Property Values Appeals Board is more than weighing evidence and adjudicating taxable values. It is an opportunity to demonstrate this transparent process, the accuracy of our tax system, and is the vital contributor to the public confidence of Washington County. An example would be this last year, we had 160 appeals, and that's significantly down from when Measure Five first came in with 6,200 appeals. This is a system of peer review. Board members must be residents of Washington County who do not work for the county or any other taxing district. Community Engagement conducted the vacancy announcement and recruited for this board. The recruitment period ran from March 4th, 2025 to April 15th, 2025. This year, we have the three returning candidates, which are Anthony Mills from District One since 2012, Eric Squires from District One since 2023, and Beverly Mosher, District Two since 2024. The two new candidates are Spencer Hatch from District Two and Jody Kellogg from District Two. The next steps is the approval of this board from Board of Commissioners. And we'll be back for and during the regular session October 7th for this. And at this point, I'd like to open up for any questions.
For any questions? I have a couple. The overview work session sheet talks about how the board members should have knowledge of real estate appraisal and property tax laws, though they don't have to be experts. And it involves some technical knowledge as well as critical thinking skills, patience and understanding. And I'm just curious, what sort of technical skills?
This is where they listen to what the Commissioners bring to the board. And this could be pretty much anything. And so they really have to listen with an open mind. And if it is legitimate, we want to, we want to be able to hear these legitimate concerns. Sometimes the concerns really do not affect value, so they have to be able to weigh this. And it's kind of a, it's not common sense, but it's technical sense. And where we're looking at these candidates, do they have some sort of knowledge of real estate or analysis skills or something that they can apply to it? And since there is a board, they bounce the ideas off each other and discuss it. And that's what we're really looking for is communication skills and the ability to really listen to our community.
Thank you very much. That really took care of my questions there. On Anthony Mills, as you mentioned, he's been serving for 14 years thus far. You know, we're fortunate to have, with these two appointments, five members. But we have tried to ensure that members don't serve for too long compared to others. So I think that's something that, looking ahead towards another reappointment, the board will need to think about that. So.
Okay, thank you.
But with no questions, I think we're thumbs up, ready to go. Oh, sorry, I mentioned earlier that the committee works for somewhat of a short time period. Could you articulate what the time period is? Because I know property tax bills go out there's a payment date of November, but then folks can pay quarterly. But so for a calendar year, when do these folks tend to, when does this board tend to meet?
Okay, so I'm going to make some, the appeals have to be in by the end of the calendar year. If it's on a weekend, then the appeal has to be in by the first, this year, the end of the calendar year on a.
I have not looked at the dates.
Okay, typically it's the end of the calendar year.
Yeah.
And then they schedule them, the first, I believe it's the first Monday in February through April 15th.
That's correct.
Okay.
Great. So it isn't one of our boards that meets all around the year, but really through a concentrated period between February and April.
This is statutory, very limited duration.
Okay, terrific. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Sorry, I forgot that question along the way. Okay, we'll move on then to board and leadership communication. And since I'm notorious for getting letters or forgetting letters, why don't we start with the draft letter that we have? So I assume that everyone has seen the draft letter. I also want to mention that we received a, another letter from Mayor Beatty yesterday. So Ms. Angie, I don't know if we want to hold on this and give everyone the chance to see that latest letter or what?
So I will answer your question with deferring back to the board and your preference in giving you an option. An option is to consider the letter in front of you in response to Mayor Beatty or in light of Mayor Beatty sending an additional letter, just hold on response to the mayor until you have time to read that letter and discuss at a future date response to that letter.
Well, I'll say that I was in transit yesterday back from a weekend away to attend a nephew's wedding. So I only found that it was in my inbox and I made sure to forward it on. But I haven't had a chance to compare her letter of August 29th to this latest letter and then to, to this draft response. But if my colleagues have thoughts on that, that will certainly influence my thinking in terms of how we, how we proceed. The other thing that I would like to articulate is last week, we went over the latest funding and governance proposal under consideration. And multiple board members have questions and want that asked questions and want that topic to come back to the board for further consideration based upon, you know, what we're learning from potential answers to those questions. And I believe that will be coming to us next Tuesday, September 25th. And we're making sure if you want to articulate.
Chair, if I may, just so that it's correct on the record. We do have work sessions scheduled for your board on September 23rd and October 14th. The conversation that the Chair and I had, trying to limit each of those to about 60 minutes because this is a really heady topic with lots of details. So on the 23rd will be an overview of the funding allocation, where are we to date? An opportunity for you to ask questions and then on the 14th, staff can come back. We can have that work time in between to come back with answers to your questions. And then we are holding, and we are holding October 21st as a tentative hold should you need a third work session for this, for this subject. I will note, just doing calendar Jenga, we did need to move the jail capacity study follow-up out. So that will be rescheduled. Ms. Kelvert's working on early October as we work through limited time and many topics.
Okay. Thank you for that calendar reminder. I appreciate that. So, you know, I think it's, on one hand, Mayor Beatty has sent multiple letters. It's an ongoing process, so it's not like an endpoint. So on one hand, I'm thinking it could be useful to acknowledge the various receipts of the letter, but that the board is continuing to do its job in terms of considering options and continuing to work with partners and being clear about that. So. But colleagues, what are your thoughts?
I have a couple of thoughts about this, and I think the letter that we were responding to referenced her most recent letter. So I do believe.
Her August 29th letter, not the letter of yesterday.
Before the one we received yesterday.
Yes.
And I, and I think we need to reference all the letters because we didn't respond to any of them, is my understanding. So that, plus I do think that we can send a shortened version to the Chair's point about the fact that we are still in the process of understanding the allocation piece and all of the different elements. Her letter yesterday to me reemphasized the issue of the, are basically our reserves and the fact that she would like to see a governance piece put in place. So there wasn't a lot of new information from my perspective.
That was going to be my, my feedback was just that I didn't get any new ideas out of the.
Exactly.
They were maybe reframed or different perspectives or advocacy for, based on feedback we provided verbally, I think, last week. It was pretty clear people were monitoring our discussion and providing input and dialogue that way.
So I would prefer to send a letter that gives more of a status update where we are. That would be my preference.
Well, I think we, we need to have a different pass of a letter. I don't think it's a good use of our time to find words here.
No.
So would you like to take point on that?
Certainly.
Great.
I'll work with Ms. Angie and Marnie.
Great. Thank you. Okay, who would like to go first in terms of board communication?
I can go. If I missed last Tuesday, I will go first. And in terms of the letter, I did review and watch last week your board discussion. I will say that you all had a really robust conversation about the library and I do not have any dissenting voice on that. I think I'm in aligned with what I've heard to the request and where the board and the staff is heading. In terms of last week, myself and Erin Doyle and Jessica Pelz from the county and Mayor Jeff Delane of Cornelius went to Washington DC as to represent Washington County with the Oregon delegation, congressional staff and the US Department of Transportation on behalf of JPAC. The agendas were really packed. The meetings were placed over Tuesday and Wednesday. And we're very, I would say, very scripted and planned. JPAC, well, I shouldn't say JPAC, I should say Metro and TriMet and Clackamas County both have the same consultant, federal consultant. So they really rolled out the red carpet, I would say, summit strategy. And I think you might know this, Commissioner Tree, somebody there, Michelle. They did a really great job of facilitating the meaning, these meetings and making sure all of our delegations were there almost everyone. And I think I provided the schedule, the talking points to you all in your inbox. But I think it was really a well-organized meeting. Our delegation were very responsive to the issues that exist in Washington County and Oregon. And they were very diplomatic in how they articulate some of the challenges that they face in DC while serving Americans and delivering action items and results to the American people. So I really appreciate that. There was no divisiveness or anything. I think everybody was sort of in this moment. The Senate meetings focused on the Road to Home bill, which included, which includes modification to the CDBG program and reauthorizes the home program among other housing policy. While many provisions of the proposed bill aligned with our priorities, there are some concerns the staff had that we highlighted for the congressional staff and to our delegates changing provisions around changing how CDBG grants are awarded in, in future years. The bill passed out the Senate Committee unanimous vote. But we're, I think the point we were asking the Senate, the senators were to continue to advocate and mitigate the concerns. In meetings with staff with US Representative both Bonamichi and Salinas, we focused on fixing the FEMA bill and a bill that has moved out of the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee on strong bipartisan vote. I think the tenor in Washington DC is really big push on bipartisan and everything that is bipartisan. So I, that, at least that's what I took out of the conversation from our staff. One more minute. We, in all four meetings, we also raised our general support for funding for CDBG and home as well as our request on issues of middle high, middle, midsize, middle-sized transportation project grants made during JPAC meetings. Mayor Delane supported our messaging and how CPDG has worked in his city and really shared a really great success stories and shared with me, actually with a PowerPoint that I intend to share with the, with the board. It really demonstrated the success the city had with that grant. And then we extended everyone to an invitation to join us, to the soon-to-be-opened The Beaverton Cat and to see how we put federal resources to work for our community. The one thing I noticed myself in Washington DC, you know, I don't know what the local conversation is about, but I was there in March and I went back again now and I did not see any homeless this time. But what I did notice was a lot of, we noticed a lot of National Guards with like actual war weapons. And the conversation or the thing that was sort of percolating my mind and I wish I had a local people that I could talk to was where did all the homeless people went? And who's having that kind of a conversation? But I did not see any ICE checkpoints in any of the spaces and where we went in our walking distance or path. But DC was great. I think we, our delegation support Washington County. They're really doing their best to deliver for Oregonians and Americans. And they're really working in an interesting environment.
I think Erin Doyle sent a whole bunch of notes in your inboxes. Wonderful. What's go next?
I can, I can go. Last Tuesday evening, we had a levy presentations to the Tiger City Council. That went well. It happened immediately after former Mayor Lube's resignation. That was a little awkward, but everybody made it through the meeting. One thing that came out of that, though, that I will just share is that that is yet another city council that is deferred supporting the library levy pending our sort of funding methodology discussions. And I guess I just bring that up to say that even in the future, if we want to decouple these things, I don't think our partners are going to ever view them as decoupled. So I just sort of had that moment as I was listening to yet another city council articulate similar things. Last Thursday, met with the Chair, had a pod shelter briefing. Lots of meetings over the last four or five days with Tiger City councilors who are all needing advice and support. And then also many, both metro and county candidates that are asking, that I've never met and are asking to, to meet. So I thought I'd mention that on, yesterday, I met with the Tiger Chamber CEO in our normal quarterly meeting at her request. And two topics that they're continuing to work on and I think are worthy of us just being aware. They continue to focus on childcare and the impact it has on workforce. And then also very focused on some transportation stuff, had a lot of questions about a number of projects and, and I worked through kind of getting them answers and trying to help answer those questions. So.
The transportation projects that they had questions on, were those around MISTIP projects or?
No, not necessarily entirely just county stuff. I mean, she, the CEO had questions, for example, about the ODOT Hall Boulevard project and just not being able to, like, they don't know who to even call or contact or ask questions. And they got answers that didn't seem like they lined up with what I knew, so I kind of verified and validated that. The CEO of the Tiger Chamber of Commerce.
That person.
Megan DeSalvo. So I just wanted to mention kind of the things that are on their radar and that they're asking about, thinking about. And some, they're frankly, things that I think we're all thinking about too. Also had a one-on-one with.
Would it be useful for there to be a meeting between yourself, that person, and then someone from Stephen Roberts organization that can speak to MISTIP as well as, you know, the state's role in all of this? And then potentially someone from LUT Todd Watkins team with regard to maintenance, I question.
Yeah, I will certainly make that offer. Thank you for that.
You might want to scope it out with LUT first.
Sure.
Thank you.
Also had a one-on-one with Under Sheriff Cook yesterday and a meeting with the new Tiger City manager. I think I mentioned that was scheduled many weeks ago. And so that was a good conversation and number of topics came up that I'll probably connect with both County Administrator Angie and the Chair on. Nothing new, but just things that we're all working on. Tonight is a Sherwood City Council Levy presentation that I will be attending tomorrow night. There's a King City Levy presentation and Commissioner Phi, I wanted to inquire. I also have a community action board meeting at the same time. Is the King City Levy presentation something that you think you could cover tomorrow evening?
Bren informed me, I'm looking into my schedule and see what I can shovel.
Okay. Otherwise, I will prioritize the levy presentation, I think is, at least that's the way I'm prioritizing it, but.
You know, another thing that I want to highlight for the benefit of all of you. The WCCLS funding model has not changed for a long time. And I don't mean just the distribution model, but the rate has not changed for a long time. And I really think the mayors and city managers let their city councils down because there has been, I mean, here alone, we've had many different work session presentations about the overall course. I brought each of those forward to the mayors in their inboxes as well as through presentations to Chair Mayor's meetings. And I know Ms. Angie has done similar things with the city managers. So I'm not buying it carte blanche that city councils feel like they haven't been brought along. I think we have taken steps.
Yeah, I think they want to, they want to know what the final outcome is in the form of funding for their, for their jurisdiction. And that's where the, that's where things are not finalized in a way that they feel like they have certainty is what I would describe.
So I just want to remind everyone again that it's, they seem to be playing an interesting game of chicken because if the levy fails, we're not obligated to move forward with another ballot item on that. So they may want to ponder their black and white position as opposed to their, it's, it doesn't need to be final for the ballot, but we certainly have some additional work to do with regard to the IGAs and the distribution before the end of the fiscal year. And so I don't think that they've thought about the consequences of failure.
That's definitely been part of my talking points with me.
All of us.
Having those conversations. And I might have said something very similar to what you just said to a mayor yesterday.
Yep.
Again, I'd already said it before, but.
Libraries are not a standard county service at all. And the county government has really been carrying a significant load for libraries for quite some time. And given all of the pressures that we're having through the state government and increased expectations, our regional government and increased expectations, as well as with the federal government, three external, excuse me, sources of increasing mandates and expectations as well as financial stress. I think those cities need to think about what it means to have a cooperative, which is different than our other partnerships.
Just so briefly to finish, I am planning to attend the beginnings of the CWS Essentials courses just to say hi and listen in hopefully on both Thursday and Saturday. Friday, there's a Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting. I also have a briefing on the ball fields. Sunday, I'm going to be meeting with the Tiger Mayor Pro Tem Wolf. They're planning to have a discussion. I think on the 23rd, they have a city council meeting about filling the mayor role, just so you all are aware. And then Monday, I have a one-on-one with Mr. Shanley at Clean Water Services. And then on that evening, there's a twelfth in the city council meeting, not a levy presentation, but where I'm doing my just regular kind of quarterly check-ins with them that they're appreciating. And then also meeting with, and I do want you all to know that they're, at Commissioner Savas's request from Clackamas County, I am helping him get information particularly about transit from our transportation team. And so I've been, we actually had a prep meeting last week on this subject. But just so you know, that dynamic is, or that communication is happening and just trying to help him get information that can, I think, more help Clackamas County than anything else.
I am. He's been a great. He's been a great, great LUT staff member for all things transit.
All I got, sorry, just a little extra, but I know there was more dialogue, too.
Hey. So on Wednesday, I had a Work Systems Inc. Executive Committee meeting. And that meeting was really focused on the replacement of Andrew McGough as their executive director. He's been there for a very long time. So there's going to be a national search and a lot of energy that's, that's going on behind that. The other thing that we talked about is the September twenty-fourth Jobs Fair. And I believe it's been in all of your inboxes. It's going to be at the Wingspan. I will be there from ten to eleven. It's, it's definitely a, a big event. And I'm really pleased that we're hosting it here at, at the Wingspan. After that, on Wednesday, I filmed my State of the County video segment. And thank you very much to Sarah and Darren for taking the time and doing a great job of coaching me. We did it at the CAT and it was, it was, it was fun to do. I mean, they make, so that was great. And on Thursday morning, I joined the WA Government Relations and Transportation Joint Committee. And that was, my purpose there was a levies communication as well. I was there with DA Barton. He obviously presented on the public safety levy. And Lisa Tattersall and I talked about the library levy. There was a lot of questions in the room. There's a lot of same type of concern, but at the, but also there was a lot of support in that room for, for the libraries and for public safety. Rep. Susan McLean also gave them a transportation update, which was beneficial for me to hear as well. The, and last Saturday, I spoke at the Union Gospel Mission Women's Life Change Center, which is a new center that's on one hundred and eighty-fifth and Rock Creek. We don't have any money in it through SHS. It's all been privately funded, but it's one of the links in the chain that provides services in our county. I talked to Molly Rogers. She helped put some talking points together along with Maida. And it, it was a really good event. And what, the thing that struck me was the, there were probably two, two hundred and fifty people there. And what struck me was the community that was there in support of this, of this center. It's, it's, it's a big building, but they were there in support. And it, that felt good to see. It wasn't about yimbyism, it was about yimbyism, yes, in my backyard. So I spoke along with Mayor Keith Wilson and Metro Counselor Juan Carlos Gonzalez. And the reason that Mayor Wilson was there is his tie to the Union Gospel Mission in the downtown core. So that was, that was why he came out. Last night, I attended the Garden Home Community Library Associate Association Board meeting to talk about levies. Obviously, that was a, you know, singing to the choir in that room. But it was, they had some questions and they, interestingly, there was an expression of dismay, I'll use that term, about some of the response they've seen from the cities. So that was, that was the other side of that coin. Commander Dave Marzilli did the presentation on public safety and really did a very good job. I've been with him on several of these and he, he does a great job. Let's see, tomorrow, I'm going to have another levy briefing at the Oneida Poll Center, their advisory committee in Tuolton. And then on Thursday and Friday, I have some staff briefings, but I will also be stopping by the Beaverton Area Chamber of Commerce Coffee Connection, again, to talk about levies. If that's fine. My report.
Great. I'll finish up then. Last week, we had a a CEBG Home Community Development Policy Advisory Board meeting where we had the public hearing for the consolidated plan, the CAPR, solidated annual performance and evaluation report. And then we adopted, adopted that or approved that. So things move forward there. We're going to be entertaining applications for future funding that we're hoping for on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth. And then all of the other meetings will be evening meetings. Through the, through the topics on applications, one of the questions they're going to be asking folks is the largest challenge to providing housing and services to the community? And also what the biggest unmet needs service for community? And also wanted to mention on King City, they have a full city council now. And their mayor is named Rachel Kinszynski. And I knew that back in April, but I had forgotten that. So things are moving forward there. Beyond that, I have a generally quiet week this week, a four-day work week for me that I'm looking forward to having. I needed to check something. I'll be meeting with some folks from OLCV tomorrow. And this time around, I am not going to be making any kind of appearance on CWS Essentials. I think I've done my duty there and will leave that to, to my colleagues to handle. So I think that's that. Leadership.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Commissioners. So I want to lift up our One Washington County podcast. As a reminder, Washington County does have a podcast. This week, the podcast will be highlighting the work of the county's mental health response team. As your board knows, the mental health response team combines a sheriff's office deputy and a master's level health clinician. So this is a good oppor, opportunity to continue to get information out in a different medium. And I will just say for me, I enjoy personally listening to the podcast while I'm out walking the dog. So it's a way to squeeze in a little bit more county information. Also, just a reminder, this month is National Preparedness Month. The county will be pushing out messages of individual family preparedness through social media and webpages. I do want to take this, just time for all of us, just to remember that we need to also take care of our own preparedness within our homes. And that was my update.
Alex.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. I don't have any substantive updates for you today, so I'm going to defer my time with you until our time later this morning. I will just say administratively, I'll be out of the office on Friday. Ms. Duke Driesen will be acting in my stead. So if you need anything on Friday, I'll probably be somewhat unreachable. And that's all I have for you.
Elizabeth for CWS.
All right, good morning, Clean Water Services Board of Directors. I have my two weeks ready sticker here in service of the National Preparedness Month. So thank you, County Administrator Angie, for that reminder. It is CWS Essentials season. So last week, we actually hosted a CWS Essentials specifically targeted to staff. And we had twenty-seven attendees from city and special district partners. And we did have one TBWD board member also attend, which was a great session. We are looking forward to this Thursday session with elected officials. Breaking news, we, because we only had one RSVP on Saturday, we had a conversation and moved that individual to Thursday.
You're opening up my Saturday.
I am freeing up your weekend. This is my bit of good news. And my understanding is that both Director Snyder and Director Phi will be stopping by Essentials. And so we're delighted to have you and can help prepare some draft remarks as well. The only other bit of news is Rick will be back on Thursday. And I'll miss sitting here with you all, but it's, it's always a pleasure. So, thank you.
It's okay. You'll get plenty of us in the CWS Work Session Day on Friday, October-
And ten.
Ten, ten. Cool, anything else? Okay, we will pause here and convene at ten o'clock for a regular business meeting. And then we will reconvene here after the business meeting, estimated at eleven o'clock. But that is dependent upon our progress on the full agenda. So we'll go from there. And then we have additional executive sessions and one open topic later this afternoon as well.
When we come back, we'll be convening in the executive setting.
Yep. And I'll make the-
Just making sure there's not, just something I'm missing.
Okay, see you later.